...session, I would ask the city to attend to the report.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. The city council is in closed session this evening. Conference Labor Negotiator. And there's no action to report out of closed session this evening.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Powers, Singleton.
Aye.
Shelton.
Aye.
Cruz.
Mayor Payne.
Here. Vice Mayor Powers is not here tonight because of family emergency. At this time, I would invite you to join me in a moment of prayer. That will be followed by the flight salute by Page eighty-four.
They're not here.
Oh, they're not here?
They're not here.
Okay, then, I would ask Councilman Shelton.
Sure.
...
Thank you, Councilman Shelton.
Aye.
The city clerk would read the video statement, please.
This meeting of the Galt City Council has been videotaped in its entirety and will be cable cast without interruption on Metro Cable fourteen, the Government Affairs Channel, on the Comcast and Shorewest Cable Systems. Tonight's meeting can be seen on Channel fourteen and will also be webcast at www.sacmetrocable.tv this Friday and Saturday mornings at nine a.m. Tonight's meeting can also be seen via live video streaming on the city's website at www.c.i.galt.ca.us. A DVD copy is also available for checkout from any library branch. Members of the audience wishing to address council should fill out a speaker identification form and give it to the clerk. Please speak into the microphone when addressing council and state your name for the record. Also, please silence all cell phones.
Okay, next, I would ask for agenda approval. Are there any additions or additions?
I would like to pull item E three to come back at the next meeting.
Okay. Councilmembers? Nothing? I would like to pull E five and E six for discussion. So, next, we have presentation, city clerk.
Okay, tonight, we have the police department, our traffic officer, and... It'll take a minute.
Will that all run through the doctor?
It'll...it should... Everything works like it should.
Before we start here, I just want to introduce myself for those of you who don't know me. Tell everybody myself and what I've done for the police department. My name is Ron Penney, and I've been employed by the city of Galt as a police officer for fifteen years as of April. I served as a school resource officer for approximately ten years. During that time, I also was part of the crime scene investigation team and hostage negotiator, one of two for our department. After my term was up as a school resource officer, I was transferred over to patrol for approximately three years. I served that and then was also field training officer during my tenure as a patrol officer. Currently, I am a traffic officer or a motor officer as part of the traffic enforcement union here for our department. So, today, we're going to...oh, we're going to try, someone tells me, to get this projected up on the board. Basically, we're going to do an overall, small presentation of what our traffic officer program is with our department. Okay. Let me just see if I can move through this again. Okay, our program, the primary purpose of the traffic officer program, as you can see, the enforcement of traffic laws in order to reduce traffic collisions, associated injuries, and to ensure the safe and expedient flow of vehicular and pedestrian traffic. As we go through the program here, you'll see some of our overall goals and objectives for this program. Overall goals, obviously, safer roadways. With safer roadways, things to lead to fewer property damages or collisions, which in turn can add to fewer injuries and fatalities. Some of the strategies we're employing to make this a successful program are the three D's, which is enforcement. Enforcement is actually, you can be proactive and make ourselves visible around the community, make sure the public knows that we're out there. And the other part of enforcement is actually getting out there and writing citations. Sometimes citations are what we need to do, hit the drivers in the pocketbook and make sure they're abiding by our laws. Education is also a very important part of our strategy. Most people think that if you stop our police officer, you're out of my way for a ticket. Education's a big part of that. Sometimes when I pull people over, they don't necessarily get a ticket. Can educate them a little bit, depending what the violation was. If they're speeding, make them aware of the speed limit in that area if they're not aware of it already. Why it is that they were...well, their speed costs you on any safe condition where it can possibly lead to accidents and/or injury. And the third part of that is engineering. That's totally up to our engineering department, which we work with very closely with. They're in charge of making sure that the city's laid out properly, traffic flows. And as you can see, there's a total of eighty-six point two-six miles of roadways within the city of Galt. As it's broken down there, there's sixteen, almost seventeen miles of those arterial roadways. Those arterial roadways are, an example would be like Walnut and or Caribbean. The roadways that lead off the freeway that get the traffic into the neighborhoods. They're the perfect example, the four-lane roadways with no houses coming out onto those roadways or just future streets that go into those roadways. Our collectors are, a lot of them are, some of our residential and our business districts where the speed limit on those roadways are usually between we assume as low as twenty, fifteen to twenty here in the old town, and then up to thirty, thirty-five miles an hour. Twenty-five for a regular residential roadway. Some of the way, we also do enforcement without an officer actually being out there. Our most important education is we have radar trailer that we set out at different locations throughout the city, finding the drivers of their vehicles, their speed at any given time when they're driving in what is residential and or business areas, just to kind of make them aware of the speed limits during that time. Let's go to the next slide here. Just a few pictures I pulled up of me doing what I do best out there, making contact with the public, like I said, at times. Writing citations all the time is just basically education. Some of the duty and responsibilities that I have in my position are service requests. A lot of times, we will get service requests from maybe schools for control of traffic in the mornings when students are coming to school and or the afternoons when all the parents are there to pick up their kids. We also get calls for certain areas where perhaps there's speeding vehicles through certain neighborhoods. Sometimes we get requests for intersections where our citizens think that vehicles aren't stopping where they're supposed to, making complete stops before proceeding, things of that manner. I also do school presentations. Part of my job is to go into the high schools and talk to their driver's education programs. Talk to all the new and upcoming drivers teams that are about to get their licenses. The teachers request that I go in there and speak to them as far as what their responsibility as drivers are and what their rights are as far as when they're out on the roadway. Every fifteen minutes is also a big part of that, that the high school has done in the past, and we're big participants in that. As far as special events, there's the parades, homecoming parades for the high schools that I participate in with the street closures leading the parade. Biggest is probably the Light Night or the Christmas Parade that we have in December, which kind of takes us all over town. Other things, there's special events such as car shows, et cetera, that might require traffic enforcement because of the amount of traffic coming in or out of the city at those times. And then every Tuesday and Wednesday, we have a big event just right down the street here where it probably brings in the most traffic of anything. So, special enforcement, again, I've told you that a ton of wheels will patrol with directed enforcement at the intersections, speeding enforcement. We've gotten grants from the Office of Traffic Safety from the state for seat belt enforcement and/or cellphone enforcement. Those grants have also come to us in the form of DUI checkpoints where we check for driving under influence and driver's license checks as well. For the department, I do limited training. I train our department in the operation of our PaaS device, which is our preliminary alcohol screening devices that we have. When drivers are pulled over for suspects that have driven under the influence, they're asked to blow into these devices. And I'm the official person who has been trained in how to operate those devices and train other officers, as well as I'm considered a PaaS expert in the sense that whenever officers are called to court for any of the DUI offenses, I'm the officer that goes to court and testifies in the precise measurement of that device. Again, the serious injury collision investigation, I've been through several schools, accident collision investigation schools, and scheduled to go continue on to an advanced course here. If there's any collisions where there's monitor serious injury, I'm the one that's most likely going to respond, whether I'm at work or not, they'll call me in. And then again, overall crimes of suppression, I'm out there just as the patrol officers are enforcing the law, so to speak. And I'm also sort of backup for the patrol officers while maybe when we're busy out there and there's...they're tasked with a lot of different things on any given time, they will call me as a backup officer for the patrol officers as well. So, that gives you a little bit as to what I do as...with my responsibilities as a traffic officer. Some of our statistics, this is just from our last month's activity. Our citation activity, the motor officer, where as you see up there on the left-hand side are the citations that I issued during that month. Okay? Then you have the department citations below, which mine are included in that one thirty-eight. Citations for unlicensed and suspended driver's licenses, a total of sixteen. Traffic collisions, for the last month, we had a total of five. And then the arrests made due to traffic, neither just mine, due to traffic stops. They coincide with a suspended or unlicensed because that's technically a misdemeanor offense. Our traffic complaints of the last month, we didn't have any traffic complaints. We're still working on some from the previous month, but it was a good month for the traffic complaints last month. And this is what our overall goal is, as I mentioned in the beginning of the presentation here. Our results is to minimize all these categories. And during the years of two thousand seven to two thousand eleven, excuse me, our collisions, our injured collisions have decreased by forty-eight percent, a significant decrease, as our persons injured, forty-three percent, our hit-and-run collisions by fifty-six percent, and collisions total of seventy-two. And this has a lot to do with not only the enforcement that myself and other officers are doing, but the education we're providing to the community, our young people as they're coming and getting their driver's licenses or being new drivers. All this helps in the reduction of these results. As we continue forward here, what's our future, what do we hope our future is for our traffic officer program? As you may, as I noticed at the beginning, it's a traffic officer program because I'm the only officer that's assigned to this specific position. Our hope is that as a department, we're able to have a traffic unit where it would be more than just me. There's definitely a need out there. I've seen the city over the last fifteen years grow tremendously. Obviously, the traffic, there's no traffic out there than ever before. More people coming into our community for different things as our city's grown, we have a lot to offer, and people from outside the area are coming in. Our goal is to, like I said, increase the number of officers that are out there for our traffic, get some type of supervisor, whether it's a sergeant or corporal, to where we can sustain our own unit, so to speak, with other officers. We already have the other motorcycle available there for other officers so the position be available to us. And I know that's kind of the picture of that bike there is kind of very futuristic. I was talking to the chief prior to our start here, and I took a very good class here about two weeks ago, which is called a forensic mapping class, a total station class, where basically I can get out there and investigate a collision via total station, which as many of you guys might recognize it as the instrument that surveyors use to, whether they're going to survey land for building or other purposes. We actually have this instrument you can point and shoot basically at all the different angles at a intersection or damage to vehicles or whatever, and it plots everything out for you very precisely, does all the math, et cetera, et cetera. I think it's a program that as our city grows, it's something that we'll definitely have a use for. But I hope, and I hope the council agrees, that as the city grows here, our program will become bigger and continue to do the work we've done so thus far as to reduce our collisions and make our streets safer, not only for our drivers, but our pedestrians, our bicyclists. Here in a couple of weeks, or I believe on the eleventh of May, we have the bike rodeo scheduled for...at the community park. And all this works into our whole traffic plan, bicyclists, skateboarders, pedestrians, people in cars. So, I hope we continue to move forward and continue our program going. So, thank you very much for listening.
Thank you, Officer Payne.
Is there any questions or comments regarding?
No, thank you.
Questions, comments? Councilman Singleton?
Aye.
Good presentation, Ron, thank you.
Yeah, we just want to say that we appreciate your presentation and hopefully the people of Galt have a better understanding of what you do and why you do it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we will now go to public comment.
Okay, under Government Code, Section five four nine five four point three, members of the public may address council on non-agenda items. Speakers may address council on any agenda item during consideration of the item. Speakers shall restrict their comments to issues that are within the subject jurisdiction of the city council and limit comments to a maximum of three minutes. Please let us fill out a speaker sheet located on the table inside the entrances to the council chambers and forward the completed speaker sheet to the city clerk.
I have...Rick, you want to talk on an agenda item, am I correct?
And one of those was pulled off until next week or the next meeting, and one will be discussed.
Okay, would you read the consent calendar, please?
Okay, we have six items on the consent calendar. Number one, approval of the minutes of the special and regular meeting of April third, the regular meeting of April seventeenth, and the special meeting of April nineteenth. Number two, approval of the city of Galt warrants. Number three, regulations for candidates for the November sixth, two thousand twelve election. We'll come back at the next meeting. Number four, Galt Arno Cemetery District equipment request. Number five, which was pulled and will be discussed, contracts with seven approved consultants for on-call planning and environmental consulting services. And number six, which was pulled and will be discussed, wastewater treatment plant budget transfer for professional services.
Thank you. Let's see, since you pulled item number three, then we will just go to item number five, which I pulled. And basically, on that one, I just needed a clarification. Under recommendation, it says approve the attached resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into seven different contracts. And then down below, it talks about what we've done in the past, and that was authorizing the planning director. So, is that the change that now instead of the planning director, it will be the city manager?
Yes, consistent with the new purchasing policy.
Okay, all right, thank you for that clarification. So, let's see. Would you read the recommended action on that?
The recommended action, adopt the resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into seven different contract agreements with approved consultants and to award subsequent purchase orders for services on private development applications without limitations as to contract costs and to award purchase orders for city-sponsored projects not to exceed thirty thousand dollars per task when budgeted or appropriate funds are available.
Okay, and with that, I would move to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
You have a first and a second? I made the motion. Would you do a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Singleton?
Aye.
Shelton?
Aye.
Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Payne?
Aye. Motion has passed unanimously with one council member absent. The next item, would you go ahead and read it?
Wastewater treatment plant budget transfer for professional services.
Okay, and let me find that. Did Mr. Walters want to...that was one of the ones you were concerned about? Was there anything in particular you wanted to discuss on that? Do you want to come up here and make that statement so we can answer it?
Good evening, council. Rick Walters, I've been in the city for twenty years. I just want to know what the...what is it, the fifty thousand, what is it going to be used for? Professional services, you need to stop that as far as I'm concerned. Professional services means that the services are detailed, Miss Stafford, but I'll have our public works and our public works director provide some details.
What I'm looking for, though, in the future is so everybody out here in the audience can understand what's going on. And if you don't discuss it, if nobody discusses it, you just pass it, we don't know what's going on.
Okay.
Can you help us?
And I did pull it for discussion. That's really huge, so...
Thank you.
Hopefully, that will make you feel good.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, this item has to do with really just transferring funds from one budget account to another. We have a capital project, the load station work that was not done during the year. And in the end, really, we worked on equipment at the wastewater plant itself. And it's not professional services that we might be thinking of in the sense of a consultant. It's actually electrical specialty contractors who come in and work on the control systems and some of the other electrical systems. That's the primary items that are in there, so just wanted to clarify that.
Okay.
Specifically, we had work at the headworks, the auditor and motor unit, was about twelve thousand dollars worth. That failed. It's not something you can say we'll put off till later, we really had to do it. The return to committed sledge pumps was an issue that we have several of those, and they were running on down to one pump, and we really needed to get the other two that were in there repaired and operating. This is actually kind of indicative, I think, of some of the issues that were going on with the plant, that they really hadn't been keeping up with some of these maintenance repair items. And with Mark Clark's here now, he's really placed an emphasis on that, and I thoroughly applaud him for that, by the way. There are several other items, having to do with the restoration of some of the property from the One Catholic Church. After we terminated the lease, there were some things we had to do in accordance with the lease agreement. And then regarding the facilities plan that's underway, we had to make some modifications to some of our sampling locations to get better data for that plan. So, again, those are the highlights of the items. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Well, I pulled that because of my concern, says that we had budgeted insufficient money to cover much of the replacement cost. And I had two things I was concerned about. Are we paying close enough attention to the maintenance so that we can foresee the possibility of replacement or repairs? And if we are doing that, are we needing to start to adjust our budget to cover those possibilities?
Well, I'm sure the city manager would attest, we had numerous discussions about the wastewater operations budget during the budget discussions. And we have increased them. We did trim it back a little bit, but I think we're definitely on the right path in that area.
Okay. That was my concern, and that's the reason I pulled it. And we had a discussion about how the money was being used. Hopefully, that helped our citizens understand that. If not, staff is always willing to meet with the citizens on particular questions.
Yeah, I wanted to maybe just reinforce what Richard said, is with our new utilities superintendent, he really has placed renewed emphasis on routine maintenance, making sure that our staff are going through and checking the pumps and control systems and everything, making sure they're operating at peak efficiencies. And that we're budgeting annually to go ahead and do the work that needs to be done to make sure things are operating the way they are. And so, you will see when we present the budget in May, a number of items that will be added in the upcoming two-year budget process that will address them and get our maintenance and operations out there to a higher level what we need it to be.
Okay, and I appreciate that, especially when we don't have a lot of excess money. We want to be sure that we have money budgeted for the things that are really, really necessary, especially maintenance. So, with that, I would move to approve. Is there a second?
A second.
Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Singleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Shelton?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Payne?
Aye. Motion has passed unanimously with one council member absent. Next item, please.
The rest of the...
Okay, is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve, the remaining?
We have a motion in a couple of seconds. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Singleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Shelton?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Payne?
Aye. Consent calendar is passed unanimously. So, now we will move on to the next item.
Okay, no public hearings, we move on to the regular calendar, the treasurer's office. The treasurer's report for the period ending March two thousand twelve.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor, City Council. I see that there's a lot of high school seniors in the audience tonight, and I want to direct this report mostly to you and hopefully try to explain a few things. One of the job duties of treasurer is to invest the, what we call idle cash, and that means the cash that the city has that has been designated, but just simply has not been spent yet. And so, and we always, you always hear around town where we want to shop local, shop local. And what that means is, and I'll try to put it in senior terms, you know what? When you're hungry, go to Taco Bell, go to McDonald's. Don't drive to El Row or don't drive to Lodi, spend your money. We'd like to keep the... We'd like to keep the money right here in Galt, because it creates Galt jobs, and it, and it produces more money generated in Galt, including sales tax revenue, which eventually come to the city. So that's, that's what it means by, by saying shop local. And when investing, as a treasurer, it's my responsibility to invest local. And what that means is that we have, as I said, this idle cash, um, in our Farmers and Merchants, uh, uh, checking account, right now, we have about 1.6 million dollars in it, okay? And of course, money comes in, money goes out. But also, besides that, we have two certificates of deposit at Farmers and Merchants, totaling $9 million. A, and a money market, uh, account at F and M, all, for $3 million. And then a, a million dollars also in a, in a certificate of deposit at Premier West Bank. So when you add all those monies up, it comes up to a little bit over 14 and a half million dollars. That's what it means to invest local. We're keeping that money right here, so those local community banks can then make loans to people in this community who need that money. So that's what it means by shop local and invest local. Now, having said that, I just want to give a quick, uh, report to the council to say that, uh, for the first three quarters of the fiscal year, um, unfortunately, we all know interest rates are down, okay? But, uh, the city has earned about $340,000 in interest. And, and as of the end of March, and on the entire portfolio, um, the city is currently earning .71% on its idle cash. So I'll answer any questions that the council has, otherwise, I ask for your approval for the treasurer's report for March 2012.
Council, do you have any questions? No?
No, I think we all wish it was better, but...
Okay.
Thank you. We all wish it was better, right.
And are you going to give us and the seniors a test on that in the future?
I see my gut judge is here, so that, he qualifies as the most senior out of us all, right?
Okay. Is there a motion to accept the treasurer's report?
I will wait up for...
Thank you. We have a motion in a second. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Singleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Shelton?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Payne?
Aye. Do we need to have a separate motion on each of those items? They're accepting the treasurer's report and the investment policy?
The answer is yes.
Yes.
And, and I'll explain that in just a minute, if, if you want me to get into the, to the investment policy.
I would appreciate that.
Okay. All right. The, the investment policy, um, by California law, has to be presented in an open public forum meeting. And again, for the, for the benefit of the audience, what an investment policy is, is, I'll call it like a plan or a roadmap, of how the city needs, uh, or I should say, how the city plans to invest their monies for the next fiscal year. And overall, or ultimate responsibility of investing is, belongs right here at the city council. Now, the investment policy itself, which is just a written document, looks like this, and it's available out on our website, by the way. It authorizes the city council on a yearly basis to, uh, authorizes the treasurer to make those investment decisions for the City of Galt. Now, with that, it also states what the objectives of when that treasurer does invest money, what the objectives are. We all know the first objective is safety, make sure the money is going to be safe. Second objective is liquidity. So in other words, make sure we, the city has enough money to, to meet its obligations, to be able to pay its bills. And lastly, then, once those two are satisfied, then get the most yield that you can possibly get. It also indicates what investments that the treasurer can invest in. We can invest, of course, in pretty much what we have in the previous, uh, report, as far as the treasurer's report. We have a checking account. We have, uh, an investment in the, the state of California, what are called life funds. We have, as I said, all the local money at Farmers and Merchants Bank, uh, and also Premier West Bank. And then, government agencies, Fannie Mae, Freddie Mac, Federal Home Loan Bank, we are able to invest in those things. Um, and it also says of, of what, what items we cannot invest in. For instance, even though it's allowed by state code, we do not, as the City of, of Galt, do not invest in corporate bonds. Here's the reason why. It takes a lot of homework and constant monitoring of those corporate bonds. We don't get, you don't get any particular higher yield or anything on those corporate bonds, and I'll give you a great example. If, if, I'm not saying we did, we, because we did not, but if the city invested in Lehman Brothers about two years ago, well, Lehman Brothers received a, a good rating by the rating agency, and then two days later, then filed for bankruptcy. So that's why we, as a city, don't invest in corporate bonds. I just feel that there is just too much work, and you don't get enough benefit out of that. Um, and as I, and, and it also says, this roadmap tells us that we should diversify our investments. Don't put too much money in one particular institution. And, don't put any, don't put all of our eggs in one basket, don't put it all in CDs, just diversify it a little bit. And that's why we have the portfolio that we do. Also, it says, produce a monthly report, which is always available out on, out on the treasurer's website. So that's what this investment policy is. As I said, it has to come before, uh, a formal meeting to the council every year. This, it's, it's, this is the time when, this is for the 2012, 2013 year, and that's why you have it before you tonight. So if you have any questions about the investment policy, we'd be more than happy to answer it. Otherwise, I'll ask for your approval of this policy here this evening.
Questions? Comments? Then, I will again ask for approval of the investment...
Motion to approve.
...policy. We have a motion, is there a second? Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Singleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Shelton?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Payne?
Aye. Motion passed unanimously, and thank you for that.
Thank you very much.
The death presentation. Next item, please.
Next item, City Attorney's Office ordinance amending Chapter 9.44 of the Galt Municipal Code regarding abusive solicitation.
Good evening again, uh, mayor and council members. This ordinance was introduced at the last city council meeting, and it revises the city's existing abusive solicitation ordinance to enhance the city's ability to control abusive solicitation on private property. In particular, it provides on private property, including private parking lots, if the owner or tenant has asked the person not to solicit on the property, or has posted a sign stating that solicitations are not allowed on the property, that it is prohibited. Unless there's any questions, I'd be asking for your, uh, motion to adopt the proposed ordinance this evening.
Questions? Comments? Someone have a question?
I was just gonna, I was just gonna thank, uh, Steve for, uh, helping myself and the other council, uh, members with this abusive solicitation ordinance, um, because I think it's something that we, we really needed to protect our citizens, uh, going to and from stores and restaurants, and so they can, uh, feel safe in doing so, uh, coming in and out of the stores and restaurants.
I know this is something that you felt passionate about, and I...
Very much so, very much.
I'm wondering, how, how we, are we going to make any special effort to notify the merchants that they need to post such a sign or something?
I've already been speaking with, uh, the, uh, business owners, and I'm sure we'll figure something out as far as getting them notified.
Okay. Thank you very much. If there are no questions, then is there a motion?
Go ahead.
You didn't have a comment? I thought you were going to, huh?
No.
Motion to approve, please.
Second.
Okay, we have a first and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Singleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Shelton?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Definitely, aye.
Mayor Payne?
Aye. Motion passed unanimously, but one absent. Next item, please.
Next item, Community Development Temporary Fee Reduction Incentive Program for Single-Family Residential Homes.
Thank you, and good evening. Uh, as City Council knows, this economy has had a very significant impact on construction of new single-family homes in the City of Galt, uh, as is elsewhere in the state. Uh, construction of single-family homes has plummeted from an average of about 200 permits a year to just 46 permits in 2007, when the economy really, uh, the downturn really hit home. It dropped again in 2008 to 30. And then in 2009, the city issued one permit for a single-family home, um, and that was the last one that we've issued to date. Uh, the good news is that local home builders have recently expressed some interest in returning to the housing market, uh, but they have been reluctant to do so because of the costs associated with construction and obtaining a permit, coupled with the uncertainty that they'll be able to make a reasonable return on their investment. Uh, in an effort to encourage housing starts in the city while we wait for the housing market to rebound fully, uh, staff was asked to recommend an incentive program for city council's consideration. The idea behind this proposal came forth a few months ago, when building firm staff was asked to do a comparison survey of the City of Galt's development impact fees compared to nine other jurisdictions in the region. Uh, that was sort of an update of a prior survey. Uh, those fees did not include school or fire district plan check fees that are kind of outside our control. But the Galt fee for a 2,250 square foot home ended up at, uh, $40,829. Uh, that was somewhat artificially inflated because of the assumptions that were used in that survey for valuations, that we don't actually use that high of evaluation. But it gives, regardless, it gives a reasonable idea as to how we compare regionally. Um, west, of those nine jurisdictions, West Sacramento, Elk Grove, and Stockton had the highest fees of the nine, um, at about $56,000, $54,000, and $49,000 respectively. Folsom and Lodi were lowest in the $27,000 range, and Galt, Rancho Cordova, and Manteca came in roughly between $35,000 and $41,000. Uh, if you look at the average of those fees, uh, which is about $39,916, uh, City of Galt's pretty much right in the middle there. So, uh, on to our program that we're recommending. Uh, staff's recommending a temporary fee reduction program to help finish partially-constructed neighborhoods, to stimulate construction activity, to create local jobs, and to increase local spending. Uh, the proposed incentive would subtract, subtract roughly $10,000 from each new single-family building permit. Um, the amount varies a little bit depending on its location and its size, whether it's in the northeast area or outside. For eligibility, staff recommends that it be limited to construction of new single-family residential homes. Uh, it must occur within existing subdivisions for which a final map has been recorded as of today, or on some miscellaneous infill lots within the city, primarily in the old-town area, that have appropriate zoning, but just have not been, uh, built on. Uh, I've listed the eligible subdivisions that we've identified on page three of the staff report. Basically, it's Creekside 2, Creekside 4, Countryside 2, The Meadows, River Oaks 3, Chancellors 8 6, and Somerset Unit 2. Uh, these vacant lots can be an ISOR for adjoining neighbors, ongoing weed abatement and property maintenance problems for code enforcement, and they're also just an inefficient use of the city's existing infrastructure, uh, and they generate minimal property tax. So the city would really like to see them developed, and that's what this program is intended to, uh, help start. We are not recommending any specific minimum or maximum size limit for the homes, but that is something that, uh, city council could impose if you want to be more restrictive than what staff is recommending. If you do want to impose a size limit, we would recommend you only do that on the listed subdivisions and not on the infill lots. Most of those are very small, and it'd be difficult to get a, a larger home on those lots. Uh, we are also not recommending a limit on the number of applications that can be approved. We're willing to take anybody that's, that's willing to go through the program. Uh, for the term of the program, we're recommending that it be initially offered for 18 months. It would commence tomorrow, uh, would end on November 4th of 2013. Uh, we're recommending 18 months because it conveys a sense of urgency, and we want people to, uh, get started on the construction activity. At the end of that initial 18 months, council could reevaluate, and it could be extended for an additional six months for a maximum two-year period. That's what was in the notice, we'd have to renotice if you went longer than two years. Uh, the proposed resolution does include a sunset clause, so the fees will go back to their original amounts automatically at the end of that time period, uh, unless you wish to extend it further. So the proposed fee reduction amount is based on three recommended fees. Um, 50% of the traffic impact fee, so that's equal to, um, 5,200 roughly in the northeast area, about 5,800 outside the northeast area, 50% reduction of the recreation impact fee, that is a little over $4,000. And third, 100% reduction of the policy document recovery fee. Um, that amount varies by valuation, so it'll depend a little bit on the size of the house, but some examples are listed in your staff report, roughly in the $400 to $600 range. For a 2,000 square foot home in the northeast area, the reduction would equal $9,655. The same home elsewhere in the city would receive a fee reduction of $10,324. Uh, the program rules and procedures are outlined in the staff report. We are recommending that they be relatively simple, so staff doesn't have to spend a lot of time, uh, on implementation, and it's more flexible for the developers. Uh, however, the intent is to generate new construction, so we are recommending a few guidelines, uh, be adhered to. First is that a project will be accepted into the program only if the application and required materials have been submitted by the end of the program, November 4th. So the, the application has to be in, and all the application materials. And they need to pay 100% of the plan check fee upfront. Normally, we require 90%, but if we go through the whole plan check process, and then they decide not to pull the permit, we'll at least recover our, our hard costs. Uh, two, the applicants must diligently pursue a permit application and obtain a building permit no later than January 31st of 2014. So if they get it in the last day in November, they got a couple of months, they need to get that building permit issued. Um, we are not recommending that any time extensions be granted during the construction process. Um, they have, you technically have about six months between inspections, but our next, uh, program guideline, we're also recommending that any home be constructed and receive final inspection within a year from the date of permit issuance. Uh, typically, that's, that's not been a problem for most home builders. Um, the other, the final guideline is that the 18-month initial program can be extended an additional six months, with the sole discretion of the city council. Now, we've listed a few additional requirements the council is free to consider, or anything else that you want to provide staff direction with. Um, kind of a long report, so I won't go into those unless you have questions afterwards. Uh, in conjunction with this program, staff is also working on, uh, some changes to our architectural review process. Right now, almost all of those subdivisions that I listed that have the vacant lots are subject to some onerous requirements, that if they make any changes to their architectural review packages, if they want to change a floor plan or an elevation, they, it constitutes a rezone, and they have to go back to the planning commission and city council for a full rezone to substitute a new floor plan. Um, staff is working diligently to do some code amendments and change that process, so it would just go back to the planning commission at a notice public hearing. That way, the neighbors get noticed, but it's at least, it's one hearing, and the application fees would be far less, and the time would be far less as well. Uh, we'll be coming to city council on May 29th with that recommendation, it's going to the planning commission on May 10th. The program furtures a number of general plan policies, mainly related to encouraging infill and prioritizing growth where there's existing infrastructure, so this project is consistent with the general plan. Um, the staff report lists some alternatives to the recommended program, um, for council's consideration. Staff is not recommending any of those alternatives. Again, I'll, I'll let you, uh, tell me if there's something you want to discuss, uh, when I'm completed with this, with the presentation. Uh, for fiscal impact, the financial impact will ultimately be determined by how many people participate in the program. Um, so, worst case or best case scenario, all 192 homes participate, um, you are going to have some impacts to those funds that we are recommending the fees be reduced in. However, the traffic impact fee, um, when staff analyzed it, if all 192 of the subdivision lots were developed, it'd be a reduction of about $1 million in the traffic impact fee than would have otherwise been, uh, paid. But when you analyze that, the 2009 Traffic Capital Improvement Program looked at all of the circulation improvements that would need to be done for build-out of the 2030 general plan, and the total cost of those circulation improvements was over $215 million. Um, that plan, like most CIPs, included an assumption that a certain percentage of that total would come from other funding sources, like grants or other agencies. Um, this plan made the assumption that $67 million of that total would come... Um, this plan made the assumption that sixty-seven million dollars of that total would come from other funding sources. That did not include the twenty million dollars that was alwa- already allocated to the Central Gulf interchange, so it already assumed eighty-seven thou- eighty-seven million dollars would come from other sources. If this program was wildly successful, uh, that would be a one-point-six percent increase in the existing assumption. So, it would be a minor, um, change, and that would be made in the next regular update of the TCIP. Recreation impact fee, again, um, the city council adopted a new Parks Master Plan in 2010. The decision was made at that time not to fully implement the recreation impact fees at that time because of the economy and the cost that it would have on, on construction. So, we've already not fully implemented that funding source. This would just further, uh, continue the non-implementation of that. Worst-case scenario of all, or best case, if all one hundred and ninety-two homes were constructed, there'd be a shortfall of about seven hundred and sixty-nine thousand than would have otherwise been paid. That could be, uh, adjusted when city council reevaluates the recreation impact fee implementation. If you just changed the open space acquisition, um, to four acres per thousand instead of five acres per thousand, that would be your, your complete cost savings for this program. Policy document recovery fee, um, hard to estimate because it's based on number of, size of the homes, but assuming an average of sixteen hundred square feet, the revenue gap would be about sixty-eight thousand dollars. The solution to that funding shortfall is basically to delay planning document updates, uh, do more of the work in-house, find grants or similar other funding sources. So, that concludes my report. Um, staff did send letters to all of the subdivision owners. Uh, we called as many as that we could, and, uh, Laura Brandon could not be here tonight, but she did ask me to express her support of the program and her appreciation for council's, uh, consideration. Price Walker with Elliott Homes likewise was also supportive of the program, and Mr. Guthridge is here tonight, so I'll let him speak for himself.
Thank you. I would like to just make the comment to all the faces I see out there that look a little bewildered in days. We have this report, uh, actually, it's online, and we get it ahead of time, uh, so we have the opportunity to, to read it and under- try to understand it and ask questions. Um, and you, as citizens, also have the opportunity to do the same thing. Go online, you can read the same packet that we get, and you're certainly welcome to come to the council and, and ask questions. We don't want you to get the feeling that this is the first time that we've seen all of this, and we're just making, um, judgments without, um, studying it and understanding it, just like you seniors have to study before your test, we have to study before we, um, make decisions here. So, it is online. If you don't have enough homework, you're certainly welcome to, uh, to check us out. Okay? As well as the rest of the citizens of Galt. Having said all that, are there some comments or questions, uh, Councilman Cruz, or?
I'll send that for you.
You can flip the coin.
Anyone need to speak on it?
We have no speaker sheets. Right?
No speaker sheets, Mrs.
We're willing to accept the speaker sheet if you want.
I hear what you have to say first.
Oh, okay. Okay, Councilman Cruz, I think I called on you first.
Let's go.
Can I speak now?
Yes, you may.
You guys kept talking.
I.
Sandy, you said, you listed, uh, several of the subdivisions that were not filled, infill, and, and I didn't catch the numbers of individual developers you had heard from. I mean, you have like Creekside Two and Creekside Four, Countryside, but what were the individuals that you heard from?
Uh, Creekside Two, Unit Two is Mr. Guthridge. Creekside Four is Pacific Union, Mr. Tunney. Um, I left him a message, I haven't heard back from him. Countryside Two, uh, was Laura Brandon, did talk to her. Somerset Two is also Laura Brandon.
Okay.
Uh, Meadows is owned by the bank, um, so we sent them a letter but didn't, weren't able to contact them directly. River Oaks Three was Price Walker with Elliott, did talk to him, and Chancellor State Six, um, we did not, uh, touch faces, but we talked to him when we were preparing our budget figures, and they said that they would be very supportive, and the exact statement was they would build every single lot that they had.
Okay.
But we'll see if that comes.
Or have heard from about half.
Yes.
Okay. That was another thing I just wanted to explain I didn't.
Very good, thank you.
You just had my question answered.
No.
Uh, the biggest question I have at this point is, so, right now, those that you have talked to said with reduction of this nature, they would be more than willing to go up and start building again. Is that my understanding of this correctly?
Uh, come and meet with you.
Or at least meet with you for such.
They would definitely take it to their upper management if there was some, and, and it definitely would, uh, spark some discussion at their offices.
Thank you.
Mike?
Thank you. Any questions?
Yeah, I have a question.
Please, go ahead.
Um, I see all the people you have listed here. There's also other sites out there that aren't listed. Are they going to be able to join the program? If I'm understanding that right, if they, uh, choose to do so, is that correct?
Yes, there are, we identified about twenty-two miscellaneous infill lots throughout the city.
It was just for example.
We just sent letters to those property owners.
Okay. Okay, I just want to make sure that we do have other, uh, sites that are ready to be developed and they can join. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, one of the things I'd like to clarify, I thought you said that this program would start tomorrow, but, um, it says all applicants shall obtain planning commission approval of new home floor plans, and it has to go before the planning commission, so that, that would be a different start date for them, right? They would have to go through that before they could start.
That was actually one of the additional requirements council could consider adding. That's not a, staff's not recommending we do that, but if you did want to ensure that, uh, for example, someone with an infill lot that does not have an approved architectural review package goes through architectural review, you could require that they go through the planning commission and do that.
They would still have to build within the zoning requirements, right? Yet they couldn't come in with something that wasn't zoned properly. So, that's just something for us to consider. So, that the downside of that would be the timeframe involved in them going for the planning commission and go through that whole process, which would take, how long do you think?
Um, I would say probably just because the planning commission only meets once a month, it's probably going to be a two-month process if they get a complete application in.
And also, uh, one of the things we're trying to do is to attract them to, um, start building. Uh, even though we're talking about reduction in fees, if we don't issue any permits, we don't get any fees. We don't get any money anyway. Um, so at least this way, if we can get something generated, um, we would be, we would be building on some vacant lots, we would be helping with the unemployment situation and the economy pretty much all the way around. So, taking those things into consideration, that's why we feel comfortable with, uh, looking at reducing the fees. One of the other things I was wondering about is a letter of credit. Um, what's involved with a letter of credit? You're suggesting that they obtain a letter of credit?
Um, actually, Mr. Guthridge could probably tell you better. He, that's his.
Would you like to come back? Usually. Mr. Guthridge, and talk about that?
Again, it's not a recommended addition, but it's something council could consider if you wish.
Well, it says here, and it's something he has mentioned to you, I'd rather hear it from a horse's mouth.
I meant that piece.
Mayor, uh, Councilmember is my deputy general partner in, uh, Ford G's Development. Uh, the letter of credit means that I have to go to the bank, and they're going to have to put up money, and I have to pay for that money for that letter of credit. It could be, you know, a hundred thousand, two hundred thousand, three hundred thousand, so I have to pay for that letter of credit, and I'm saying, why do we have to do that? I mean, we wouldn't have to do that on a regular billing, uh, permit or anything else. Why would we have to do it on this situation?
And that would be my question too. If we're trying to look at ways to, to encourage you to build, why would we stick another cost?
And maybe even be honest with you, maybe somebody couldn't, maybe some builders couldn't get a letter of credit. They might have to go to a bond, and then the bond's more than the letter of credit would be. And the bank might not, what team want to issue a letter of credit? So, I mean, there's some circumstances there.
Okay.
Uh, a little, little thought, uh, I had the city, uh, uh, building department give me some information about the cost of, um, what it's going to cost me in fees from the fire department. As of July first, the fees are going to be for a single-family approximately, uh, nine hundred and ninety-eight dollars or a thousand dollars. Then, as you know, we add four thousand on that for the sprinklers, so now we got a five thousand dollar bill. We didn't have two years ago, or three years ago.
Are you saying that's an increase, a total increase in, in your cost, or is that just a partial increase with a, with a fee increase from the fire department?
That's the total fee from the fire department, nine hundred and ninety-eight dollars.
And that's an increase from in the past?
Well, yeah, it went up from, uh, it started at six sixteen July of eleven, went to, uh, January one, it went to eight thirty-six, and now it's nine ninety-eight.
And of course, you know, there's nothing we can do about that except offer, offer our sympathies, uh.
Well, I, what I want to point out here, then, you know, we, we're going to maybe get a, which I really appreciate, and let's, let's face facts, but I, I'm going to get a ten thousand, then I'm going to take off a thousand. So, you see, I'm, because I'm, I'm going to put a thousand dollars out there, then I got to take off another four thousand or five thousand for the sprinklers, so now I'm down to, you see where I'm coming from?
I do.
You know? So, it isn't all, it isn't all a plus. And, uh, I, I think that's, that's really important to look at is, you know, uh, when you look at different, uh, cities, you see we're about average. But the problem is, as you know, the last house was built, was built by our company, and that was in 2009. So, you take Elgro, they've built, I know here, I got a thing about a month ago, is about forty-four houses. So, we, you know, we, we should look at everything we can, that that's if we want to create new construction in the, in the city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Okay, um, you have before you some ideas and recommendations. Is there any discussion on any of those recommendations? Did you want to, uh, take out any? Sure.
Um, the line of credit letter he was speaking of was just an option, am I not correct? This is not something we are recommending, uh, as, as a stance at this point, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. It was something that if council is concerned if we're waiving or reducing the fees upfront, but the developer doesn't finish the home or something, and we never get those fees recovered, one way of guaranteeing that we at least get paid that is to have them do a letter of credit, and then we reimburse them at the end for the amount of their fee reduction. But, as Mike said, that requires, that's burdensome for some developers and would require them to, uh, go through that extra step. So, we are not, we're not recommending that, but something city council could impose.
Any other thoughts?
I'm going to stick my foot in it here for a second. Going over the numbers, um, there's only like a three thousand dollar, actually, three or three hundred dollar difference between our city and Lodi, given what you're just, you're presenting. How would it affect us monetarily as far as bringing us down to the same level as Lodi? In other words, bringing it down just a little bit more, so that we're not in competition with that city? Because we're not in competition with Elk Grove anymore, given this.
Fee-wise?
Fee-wise.
Uh, the, well, first of all, the city is also, the City of Lodi is also looking at their fees right now. I'm not sure, I'd have to check with them again to see, they were kind of stalled on it, uh, to see if they've adopted the new fees, so it's possible that these have gone up already. Um, the public notice that we did, we recommended, we did give council a little bit of flexibility. Um, you could go a maximum of thirty percent reduction of the fees that are eligible. Um, it would add, well, it would make for a two thousand square foot home in the northeast area, it would make the fee reduction just under twelve thousand dollars and just over eleven thousand dollars outside of the, of the northeast area.
The other, let me just make a, a point on this too, is typically, you know, we're not in, in competition with Lodi or with Elk Grove, um, when it comes to housing. Most, all, all these are, are infill, partially-completed subdivisions. Um, I'm not aware of any of these builders and developers having projects in Lodi, so there's not a, a choice or a competition. They have, they have home sites here that are half-built, the infrastructure is in place. It's really a matter of whether or not by building homes here, whether they can recover their costs. It doesn't have, and this, sometimes there is competition, but in this case, because the home sites are already there, they've already put in their money in the infrastructure, they're not weighing, um, competition with whether they can build in Lodi, because they don't have home sites that are half-built in Lodi. It doesn't, uh, it doesn't make any difference. What they're going to weigh is whether it makes sense to put their money in this project at this time, um, and for each developer, it's going to be different, whether that, that break even or that profitability is there or not.
Did you want to go anyplace with that?
I just, I threw it out there, like I said, I was sticking my foot in it.
No?
If it's, if it's not viable, then let's not run with it.
Any other suggestions?
Yeah, I can think of.
Um, Councilman Shelton, you're comfortable?
I'm comfortable with this.
Well, I would suggest that we consider, unless you can give me some strong reasons, uh, maybe eliminating the letter of credit. And I'm also concerned about, uh, the timeframe, uh, of them having to go through the, back through the planning commission, because we, we have set deadlines on when this program would begin and end, so time is of the essence. Um, both are my thoughts. How, how does the rest of the council feel about that?
Well, I have the impression the letter of credit is an option we can choose to do. It's not part of this.
Right. That can shoot back some direction on whether we want to include it or not.
The, well, the, the resolution, um, as presented is just, is staff's recommended program. It does not include any of those, um, alternatives or additional requirements, um, listed one through four under that heading.
Okay.
So, neither one of your concerns are in the current reso if you want to pass, uh, staff recommendation.
So, if we, uh, pass the recommendation, those are not already in there. Do you want to read the recommended action? Then we'll ask for, um, motion.
Okay, the recommended action, adopt a resolution approving the filing of the California Environmental Quality Act exemption and authorizing the initiation of an eighteen-month fee reduction incentive program to encourage construction of new single-family residential homes in existing partially-constructed neighborhoods and on infill lots with suitable zoning in the city. The program can also be extended up to an additional six months at the discretion of the city council.
Okay, that's the recommended action. Do we have a motion?
Move to adopt.
Do we have a motion?
Okay.
In a second. Is there any other discussion? If not, I'll call for the votes.
I just want to thank Sandy and planning for coming up with these creative ideas and keep it at it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Singleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Shelton?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Payne?
Aye. Motion passed unanimously with one councilman absent. Next item.
Next, we go to the Public Works Department, award of construction contract, construction management contract, and engineering contract amendments for the Live Oak Pump Station and Fourth Main Project. Oh, it shouldn't be that. Um, yeah, go ahead.
I remember, who's the council? I'm sure you've seen this project numerous times before, but it's, I think it's been a while. It's been in design for quite some time, so I thought I'd just kind of show you a, a graphic of the project and talk about the next big step for recommending that you take now is to actually award the contract. Uh, the Live Oak Pump Station is currently located down on railroad tracks, um, north of town. All the city's wastewater gets pumped through that, that station, so it's a pretty critical piece of our infrastructure. It's pumped along railroad tracks up to the wastewater plant up here. Some time ago, the city looked good replacing that station. It's in very poor shape, um, and limited in capacity, and a decision was made to locate a new pump station, uh, at the site of the former wastewater plant, now we call it the materials storage, whatever, um, nice name for a dump, but, uh, it's not really a dump, I'm sorry. Um, so we have our own property, house the lift station, instead of being in the railroad right-of-way, uh, we would need to build a gravity sewer from this point to the new lift station, and then a decision, uh, again, a long process was ma- Um, so we had our own property, house the lift station, instead of being in the railroad right-of-way, uh, we would need to build a gravity sewer from this point to the new lift station, and then a decision, uh, you know, long process was done to look at the best routing to get it from here up to here, and, uh, there was a decision made some time ago to utilize mostly roads, uh, as you can see, uh, on the pipeline chart here, it's about two and a half miles of Forest Main from, from this point up to here, and, and about eighty percent of it's actually in roadways, which is much a better deal than having it in the railroad right-of-way where it is now. Uh, we did have to go around the Catholic Bishop property here, uh, this is in our access roadway, and of course, we have, we have roads in this area, this is Twin Cities Road right here. Um, the, uh, pump station itself is a submersible pump station, so you won't see much other than a concrete structure. Pumps are down inside, uh, two very large hundred-and-forty horsepower submersible pumps, two forty-five horsepower units, but everything is all set up, the main electrical and the, the structure and so forth, to handle two more of the big pumps, replacing these smaller ones. Stand-by generator, um, five-point-six million gallons per day average capacity at build-out, um, uh, when we have these other pumps, uh, which is gonna carry us a long, long time. The, um, project cost, the construction project, as we indicated in the staff reports, four-point-three-eight million, um, quite a bit below the original estimates. Construction management services and then additional engineering during the course of construction. We have a fairly healthy contingency in here, uh, recommended, um, five-point-eight million dollar total construction project now. One of the concerns in the contingencies is that while we think we've got everything pretty well covered, we are going through, uh, new ground out here. It's county roads, we're not, you know, there could be utilities that weren't located during, during the design phase that we just, you know, don't know about, um, we're finding a number of things, and even the interchange projects here that, you know, that weren't located during the design phase. And of course, if we don't use the contingencies, it goes back to the wastewater fund anyway, so, um, it's really more of an administrative thing to have that money in, in place, um, in case we need it for the course of the project. We spent about six-hundred-thousand dollars on design and, and, uh, some small amounts of right-of-way acquisition, we have all the easements now, and so the grand total is six-point-four-one million dollars. We originally had in the, in the fiscal year twelve budget, in the prior years, a total of eight-point-six, so we're about one-point-six-five under budget. So that money is, of course, already, you know, stays in the wastewater fund, and, uh, we've already taken that into account in terms of our budget process, so. Uh, as far as the actual bidding, it went fairly well, we had a lot of bidders, a lot of interest. There was one low, the apparent low bidder, um, uh, we did get a protest on that, we were able to resolve that, uh, regarding their, their licensing with the state board, the, um, when you're renewing your bonds, there's a time when you're, when they show you is not having the bond in place, but once that was, was actually renewed, they changed their website, and so we verified that was done. The, um, um, oh, the additive alternate. One of the things that was conceived in the original project was that from the new lift station, we would build another Forest Main back to the old one and connect it to the old Forest Main. And the thought was that we'd have a parallel pipe, uh, however, in order to really utilize that, um, we would have to rehab all this amount of pipe, and it was, that's, that's a lot of money frankly. And in talking with the new utility superintendent, and I know my own, you know, thoughts on the matter were that it really isn't worth the money. The likelihood of us needing to run a parallel Forest Main, uh, from the standpoint of future capacity was, we just don't see it. It's so far in the future that it's just not reasonable. In fact, we did think that the most likely use for that pipeline at some point in the future would be to use it for a recycled water, uh, transmission line back from the plant. So we thought we'd just put that off. It wasn't a lot of money, a hundred-and-forty-four thousand dollars, but, I think it's a lot of money still, but, but in terms of the project scape, scope, it's not a lot, but, but, you know, it's, we can use it elsewhere in, in the, in the utility.
And that could be done in the future if we wanted to?
Yeah, it's not going anywhere.
Okay.
Um, and, and that hundred-and-forty-four thousand was just for this portion.
Mm-hmm.
So if we ever decided we really wanted to have a pipe between these two locations, we would need to put it in a later date, which would be more expensive then than it is now. I, I don't, not to, I don't wanna dismiss that, but really, the likelihood of us utilizing that is, we, we think is very, very small. Um, I mentioned we have all the easements now, and, uh, we did go through selection process for the construction management services, interviewed four firms, and selected, uh, Stan Tech, uh, who, they're doing the Golden Heights project right now. And, uh, of course, with, with any construction project, you need to have a design engineer on board as well. Um, and, uh, so that was the engineering services, just listed in the, uh, on the slide. Actually, fifty thousand of that is a, um, additional on a design contract, and if you have detailed questions on that, I'm gonna have John Griffin to respond to those, but, um, there was a lot of work that was done, uh, probably out of scope on that project, and so we, we felt we needed to include that. And, uh, we have the money in the budget, obviously, and, uh, if I may, do you go forward with this?
Okay. Questions, comments on this?
I have a question.
Okay.
Can you tell me the railroad tracks, the location of the railroad tracks? That map's hard for me to read.
Yeah, it, they're, they're right along this diagonal line here.
Okay. And you said you have, uh, agreements with the utilities like the railroad and Kinder Morgan, which has their liquid pipeline right there where you're at?
Uh, up here? This is actually not in the railroad right-of-way.
Okay.
Our, our access roads.
Okay, okay. That's why I was asking you to, in my mind, to show me where the railroad.
Yeah, it's, you know, you can't tell.
Okay.
It's not actually, it's out in our pavement.
Okay, all right. But what's on the opposite side?
That road that goes into the wastewater plant will get a new, a new coat of AC on it.
Good. Thank you, that's all I have.
Okay, uh, we have a speaker on this item. Would the council like to hear from the speaker before we ask any other comments from the council?
Absolutely.
Okay, do you wanna, Rick Walters?
Rick Walters, I have a, a question on that, uh, five-point-six MGD, that's almost two to one what we have right now. Uh, do you have any plans for the, uh, future customers to pay their, their fair share and not allow all of this to be borne by the existing citizens? Because there is an upgrade and there's an expansion factor, and I'm just hoping that everybody is keeping that in mind.
Of the, of the total five-point-eight million dollars, um...
No, 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 five-point-six MGD?
Well, right. Well, first of all, the five-point-six is when we expand the station to include the additional pumps.
Who's gonna pay for the two-point-six MGD? Right now, we're, the existing citizens?
I understand, I was gonna get to that.
Okay.
So, so of the five-point-eight million dollars that we're talking about in construction, uh, seven-hundred-and-fifty-four thousand of that is coming out of the, um, the impact fee, wastewater impact fee account, so they're paying, what is it, fifteen percent of the project?
Why, why are they only paying fifteen percent of the project when it's almost two to one? And we're gonna be borrowing eighty-five percent?
Well, that's what I'm saying, th- this, this capacity figure is the build-out capacity.
Right.
It's not what we're building right now.
But it's gonna be in place, right? The five-point-six, once this gets going, this, this pipeline is gonna be in place for five-point-six MGD, right?
The, the pipeline will be there, but the pumps won't. We're, we're building a pump station with two hundred-and-forty horsepower pumps and two forty-five.
So you only put in one pump?
No, there's four pumps going in. The, one of the things this pump station has to do is, is deal with the variation in flow throughout the day from the city, and not just throughout the day, but throughout the seasons. Um, high rainfall times, we pick up extra water, so it has to have a pretty high peak capacity, because we don't have storage. We basically store the water in our pipes, and you can't do that very much because you start having overflows. So the pump station has to have a wide range of capacities, and you do that more efficiently by having multiple pumps of different sizes. And then, in fact, the station's actually getting variable speed on these as well, so they can really be, be, uh, operated to match the flow. Um, the, uh, difference in the pipeline capacity, um, within the ranges we're talking about is relatively small. I mean, I, I don't, I wasn't involved in preliminary design of this, so I can't tell you that if we were only designing it for three million gallons a day, what size that pipe would have been. It probably would not have been, it would not have been half the size, I know that. It would have been maybe a twenty-one-inch pipe or, or an eighteen, something like that. So when the budget was set up, yeah, it was before my time, so I can't answer detailed questions about this, but there was some review of, okay, what's a reasonable increment to charge to the ratepayer fund and what, what to put in the, in the impact fee fund. And certainly, at a future date, when it comes time to add these two additional pumps to, to reach this capacity, uh, that would be out of the impact fees.
Okay. So the citizens, so that's gonna be in addition to the five-point-eight million? They're gonna have to pay more than five point, uh, maybe another two million dollars or something for the exist, for the new customers? Is that what they're gonna have to pay?
Yeah.
In addition to the five-point-eight million? That's, but my point is, what are they gonna pay if this is gonna be sized and ready to go for five-point-six MGD? What are they gonna pay? Because this, this is gonna be set, right? I mean, you're not gonna do any more work to this.
Again, some point in the future, we will need to add or replace these two forty-five horsepower pumps and put in two new hundred-and-forty horsepower pumps. I don't know when that'll be, and I don't know what the cost of that will be, but that will be picked up by the impact fees, the, the new connections, not by existing ratepayers.
But for right now, we're gonna pay five-point-eight million for?
No.
We're not paying five-point?
I said, five-point-eight million dollars is the total project, we're construction. Of that amount, seven-hundred-and-fifty-four thousand is coming out of the impact fee fund. The balance of five million is coming out of the ratepayer fund. So the, the ratepayers are covering the majority of the cost of the initial construction, because we're placing an existing facility. But there is incremental capacity, uh, we're setting it up for future expansion, and so it was determined, again, back when the budget was done years ago, that that was a reasonable split.
Okay, now, in two thousand six to two thousand seven, it was budgeted for two-point-three million dollars? Did you spend that money?
I'm not sure what you're referring to.
For the?
I don't have the budget from two thousand seven.
For this here, right here?
Two-point, two-point-three million dollars.
I just wanna know if you did it?
I'm not sure.
If you spent the money for the Live Oak Pump Station?
This is the only project that we've spent money on, so all the, all the project costs are accounted for on that slide behind you.
Okay, so if the budget of two thousand six to two thousand seven has two-point-three million allocated for this, that figure was no good to begin with. Thank you.
Mr. Guthridge?
If I'm not mistaken, wasn't the, uh, there was a new pump station put in for that subdivision that's, uh, on Elm?
I'm talking about the, um...
Wasn't that, was that a lift, lift station? Because it wasn't, that, what was the big fight about?
Yeah, there was a...
From, from the, uh, developer?
That all feeds into this, this thing?
Yes, yes, but when that, is that what you were talking about? The lift station that they put in, put the...
I don't know if it has any relationship to this cost.
Well, I don't know about that, but there was a lift station put in, and I remember, because the developer had a big to-do about it.
I remember that too.
And, uh, he...
That's a, that's a separate project.
I understand that.
Those costs would not be included in this project.
But my, my question is, are we saying in this project, when you bring out that five-point-six, uh, MGD, are you saying all the, all the affluent will be going through this pipeline to the sewer treatment plant for the, for the new east area?
The entire city.
The entire city will run through it, so down Twin Cities Road?
True.
Okay, any more discussion or comments from anybody? Well, let me say, it's my understanding in listening to you that we have a pipe that is large, and, um, at some time, when, during peak hours, we may actually need that much, that size of a pipe. Or are we saying that it's, it's, we're looking to the future when we would need that size pipe?
My understanding is the primary justification for this project is to replace the existing pump station. The, the station is too small.
Mm-hmm.
Won't handle the flows, there's problems at peak times, and the pipe itself, that right now runs along here, is in very poor shape.
It is, yeah.
It leaks, we've had some breaks, numerous breaks in it, there's problems with gaskets, it's, it's, it needs to be replaced. So, um, the decision some time ago was made to, um, at least put in provisions for future growth, and not, you know, like, doing things like this where you, you put in small pumps now and change them out later.
And then when you get the growth, then you add additional pipes.
Right.
And at that time, excuse me, pumps.
Right.
At that time, those costs will be borne by that, that budget and the local people.
The, the, the new users.
Okay, the new users.
When you, when you put the, you put the budget together, one of the things you look at is, uh, what is the real reason for doing this work? And the real reason is not to increase capacity, the reason is to replace an aging piece of infrastructure. But it does make sense to plan for the future, and so you put in a larger-sized pipe, because you don't wanna dig it up later and then have to put in a new pipe down when you, when you grow, but the cost of increasing the size of the pipe is very minimal. You're digging up the ground, you're buying the property, you're putting in all the stuff.
Makes sense.
Just to make a slightly larger pipe does not add much cost. That's how we came up with the figure of about eight-hundred thousand dollars. That was the additional cost to go to a larger-sized pipe. If all we did was put the exact same-sized pipe in for all the facilities, it would cost us about five million dollars to do that. So to increase the, the pipe size, it's gonna cost us another eight-hundred thousand dollars, so that eight-hundred thousand dollars, we're charging to new developments. And that's how we came up with those figures.
So it makes sense to me, and it's been something that I've been concerned about ever since I knew John Griffin, and we rode out there and looked at the possibilities of the old pipe, especially if those connections failing, and if we didn't get there in time, the sewer could back up into the homes of golf, and that was a nightmare in my, in my mind, that just the possibility of that. So I'm very happy to see us moving forward, and it sounds to me like we're using our common sense, and when we're digging the hole and putting the pipe in, planning for the future, I think it's a good, uh, a good way to spend our money.
It would be saving in the long term.
So if, if there are no other comments, city attorney?
Um, I just wanna point out, there's a third element in the recommended action that deals with the adoption of a resolution authorizing the manager to grant public utility easement. And while that's necessary for this project, the proposed resolution would continue in place and authorize the manager to grant easements for all capital, uh, projects in the future as well. So that particular element, while beneficial for this project, will, is not exclusively related to the project that's before you. So I just wanted to...
Yeah, I...
...point that out before you entertain a motion.
And I appreciate your doing so, because I was assuming that this was for this project.
It was beneficial for the project, but beyond the project as well.
Okay.
I apologize, I should have mentioned that in my presentation as well. Uh, I've only been here a few months, and we've already done this twice. Uh, another project where we had, uh, I think it was Golden Heights, where we had to go back, uh, separate council action and authorize granting of easements to smud. And this is extremely common, uh, in the utility industry, where we're on a large, uh, capacity facility, a large demand facility like a pump station, uh, they wanna put a tran, their transformer on your site, and you grant an easement to them to do that. It's, it's standard, and, uh, again, since it's occurred just twice in a few months, I thought, you know what, let's go ahead and make this...
Okay.
A standing, standing arrangement for the city manager to grant those kind of things.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. Does anyone have any concerns about that portion of it?
No.
Uh, can we take this as one motion? Do you wanna read the entire recommended action?
Okay, number one, adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with Marquez Pipeline, Inc., in the amount of four million, three-hundred-eighty-four thousand, one-hundred-fifty-five dollars for construction. To execute a contract with Stan Tech Consulting Services, Inc., in the amount of three-hundred-forty-nine thousand, nine-hundred-forty-five dollars for construction management and construction inspection services. To execute contract amendments with Kennedy Jinks Consultant... Jinks Consultants for engineering services during construction, and additional design services estimated at $200,000; and authorize an overall project amount, including contingency and miscellaneous costs, of 5.8 million for the live oak pump station and forced main project. And number two, authorize the director of public works to accept the improvements and issue the notice of completion upon completion of the work. And number three, adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to grant public utility easements associated with city capital improvement projects.
Okay. You've heard the recommended action?
We'll take up recommended action.
Okay. We have a recommendation, I mean, a motion. Is there a second?
I have a second.
And a second? Roll call vote, please. It's Councilmember Singleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Shelton?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Pan? Aye. Motion passed unanimously with one councilman absent, and we will move on to the city clerk's report. And thank you, Mr. Prima, for that report.
Just a couple, before I give my reminders, I wanted to talk a little bit about our event two weeks ago now, our household hazardous waste and shredded event. It was very successful. It was a very hot day. I counted through the shredded event, there were about 200 carts that came through, which is about twice as many as our last shredded event, and I know household hazardous waste had probably double that amount. And Dolores and Aiden were out there, thanks to them, and some market staff were helping out, so it was kind of a joint effort and very successful. And I had a lot of thank yous from citizens. Just a couple reminders, the youth committee meeting will not be held on May 7th, it will now be held on May 14th at 6:00 PM in the council chambers. On May 9th, there's a Parks and Recreation Commission meeting at 7:00 PM in the council chambers. May 10th, the planning commission meeting at 6:30 PM in the council chambers. On May 12th, that's a Saturday, the City of Galt is having our bike rodeo at the Galt Community Park from 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM. It's open to anybody who wants to come out, they're raffling off some new bicycles, and I'll let the mayor talk more about it during your comments.
Oh, okay.
There's a hot dog barbecue, there's just a lot going on.
Okay.
Okay. And that takes us to our next city council meeting at 7:00 PM here in the council chambers on May 15th. Just one more reminder, on May 16th, the new commuter express bus will be here at city hall, it ends its trip about 5:30 PM, and I think about 5:00 PM, we're going to be setting up for ribbon cutting, and so the public's invited, it'll be in the newspaper, and I encourage everybody to come out for that.
Okay. That's it. Thank you. Comments by staff? City manager?
Yes, we have none.
City attorney?
I'm in.
Okay. Then we will go to the city council. Councilmember Singleton?
I'm good, thank you.
You are? Okay. Councilmember Shelton?
I just wanted to remind everyone that the Public Safety Advisory Committee, along with city staff and fire department, police department, are working together on our first annual public safety forum, basically on sidewalk safety, you know, trimming trees and shrubs, so that, you know, you have to dip down like three or four feet or walk out on the street. And fire department, they will be there to talk and discuss about the weed abatement program. So, it'll be our first one. I know there's other cities around us that have an all-day event, and I'm optimistic that someday maybe we'll be there. But this will be our first one, so any help would be appreciated.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Cruz?
Yeah, with council's permission, I'd like to have staff directed to check into the possibilities of an ordinance allowing the citizens of Galt to raise and maintain laying hens for the sorts of food, like eggs.
Say that again?
You want me to say it all again?
No, just the last part.
Losing food, as in eggs.
Losing food?
As in eggs, you know, chickens lay eggs.
Yeah. And what is it you want?
See if we can get them on this path, so that it allows our citizens to do so.
To have chickens in their backyard?
Not chickens, laying hens. I don't wish you waking up at 2:00 o'clock in the morning.
Okay. Would the council like to ask the staff to come back with a recommendation on that?
Yeah.
You would?
Sure.
Is that a yes? We need a consensus here.
I think we're fine, we'll work on it and put it on the next agenda.
Okay.
Happy to work on it. We have resident expert in the area of chickens, with Mr. Prima, so he'll be providing us with excellent direction.
Okay. Thank you for that. Anything else? Councilman Cruz?
Sound good.
That was a good one. Also, I would like to have council consider putting the social host ordinance, asking staff to come back with some ideas on that. If you'll recall, some time ago, Patricia St. James and, I believe, Kathleen Amos made a presentation about the problem of teenagers drinking in Galt, and they gave us some statistics, and it wasn't what we would like to hear, and this might be one way that we could bring those numbers down. Also, I did talk to our chief of police to ask his opinion on it, and see if he recommended it, and he did. And so, I would like for the council to ask staff to come back with some ordinance for us to review. Is that okay?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you very much. And at the request of our city clerk, I'm going to talk about the bike rodeo, it's on May 12th, and it's from 9:00 to 2:00. And our police department has put in a lot of work on it, especially Lynn Hutchinson. And it's going to be a really great day. As you know, May is Bike Month, and I'm encouraging our staff to ride their bicycle to work one day, just for the fun of it. But, back to the bike rodeo, I'm getting some chutzpah out of that. UC Davis is bringing their Safetyville USA town, it's going to be set up at Community Park. The fire department can send this CSD... Anyway, our fire department will be there, and they'll be educating moms and dads on how to properly install a car seat. We will have our commuter bus on display for everyone to admire. We will be giving away four really nice bicycles that were donated by Walmart. There'll be two boys' and two girls' bicycles, and there'll be a smaller set and then a larger set for the babies, the teens. We will have hot dogs, providing food. And another special highlight, the Galt High School Engineering Department, they're putting together a bicycle-powered smoothie machine. You've got to see it to appreciate it. And in addition to that, we will be emphasizing safety on bicycles, we'll be giving away helmets for those children that do not have helmets when they're riding their bicycles. Also, we'll be emphasizing health, I think Delta Therapy will be there, and Iron Dragon will also be talking about how you can exercise and do the karate thing. So, I think it'll be a fun day, it's from 9:00 to 2:00 at Community Park, so everyone come out, have a good time. And the other big event we had, is that yesterday morning? Or is that this morning? Our commuter bus, no, it was yesterday, had their first run. I turned on here about 6:00 o'clock in the morning, so it's a little bit foggy in my mind, what happened. But it's something that we are really proud of. It's a 40-passenger bus, and it has a reclining seat, and it has Wi-Fi. So, instead of fighting the traffic, if you work in downtown Galt, you can sit back and relax, and I think someone said, leaving the driving to us, I think some bus company said that a long time ago. And I think if you check the amount of money that you spend if you drive your car to downtown Sacramento, and if you pay parking fees, you're going to see it's a big savings for our citizens who work downtown. Let's see, what else is there about our bus? I think it's something that we're going to be proud of, we need to use it, we need to encourage other people to use it, or we could lose it. And now, our engineering department has put in a lot of hours putting this together with Secog and the county, and so we don't want them to get bored, so the next thing we'll be working on is a special route to Conson River College on our existing bus. So, hopefully, we'll get that in effect by the middle of August, so those graduating seniors can have a way to get to college if they need one, that will be inexpensive, it'll be a direct route. In addition to that, our seniors will have an opportunity, or any of the citizens, will have an opportunity to ride the bus to the medical facilities like Kaiser, Mercy, all of those on brief sale. So, we have a lot of things going on, and I think we're doing some good things. And I think I've run out of something to say, so if there's no other comments, I will adjourn the meeting at, oh, 10 minutes to 9:00. Thank you, everybody, for coming. Thank you, everybody, for coming.